Good evening. It's 5:30. I'm going to call the order to the August 19th, 2025 Hutchinson City Council meeting. Mary, we'll call roll.
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Fast.
Here.
Magers.
Here.
Goss. Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Pastor Christie Cass from the First Presbyterian Church to do our prayers tonight. If you want to come on up.
Let's pray. Holy One, we thank you for the chance to gather here, for the members of this council, for the work they are called to do, for the hearts they have for service and for this city. I pray that the actions taken at this meeting, the motions that are passed, the words that are said, be done with justice and mercy and the greater good in mind. We thank you, God, for our city, our state, our nation, and our world. May we one day live in peace. Amen.
Thank you. Mary, next item.
Item number four, Proclamations Antique Tractor Day.
If there's anyone to, for this proclamation, if you'd come meet me at the podium.
I'm Michael Hinton. This is my wife, Tanya.
Nice to meet you. All right. Whereas agriculture has always been the backbone of the Kansas economy, a heritage that predicates its 1861 statehood, it is the link to the past and to our state's strong agricultural rural family traditions that make Kansas farming vital to our nation's prosperity and whereas antique tractor enthusiasts diligently restore and study the history of farm machinery with the antique tractor representing a lifelong passion for some fond memories for others and collectors possessing hundreds of tractors or as few as two, which are tangible reminders of the agricultural heritage and history of our state. And whereas in January 2024, TalkingTractors.com was established by Michael Hinton and his family with a goal of carrying on the legacy of keeping alive the great tractors and agricultural machinery of the past and long into the future. And whereas over the past 15 years Antique Tractor Preservation Day has amassed a global following that continues to expand year after year, and whereas the city of Hutchinson is proud to have Michael Hinton an integral part of carrying on the preservation and history of the antique tractor and as a resident of Hutchinson, Kansas, now therefore I Scott Magers, Vice Mayor of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 22nd, 2025 Antique Tractor Preservation Day.
Thank you, sir. Grabbed my cellphone. I'm not sure if we can take one.
Our picture gal's not here tonight.
Okay. Oh, I was going to give you my phone.
One, two, three.
Can you take one with that, do you? Thank you. Sorry. Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I'll be happy to say a few words. Good evening. My name is Michael Hinton. I'm a Hutchinson resident. I'm also a downtown business person professional. We are hosting this Friday, starting at right at about eight o'clock, Antique Tractor Preservation Day in the city of Hutchinson for the second consecutive year. This is going to be bigger and better than our inaugural year last year. We will have more antique tractors of all different colors, shapes, and sizes in front of the U.S. Post Office here in Hutchinson. When you go into the post office, they will be stamping, as long as you have a stamp on your envelope with a Kansas in big bold letters, pictorial postmark with an antique tractor below it, signifying and marking the day of August 22nd as Antique Tractor Preservation Day. This has been a true passion. It has received literally worldwide recognition. Last year, we received envelopes requesting postmarks from China, Germany, and all across the United States. This year, the national media has picked up on it and continues to pick up on it. We will have a film crew out of Omaha, Nebraska, coming Friday morning to videotape this for a Michigan company that is putting together a video history of Antique Tractor Preservation Day and how this all began. So quite a number of festivities. We will be having a ribbon cutting at eight o'clock out front of the post office to kind of kick things off. And then, like I say, there'll be a celebration throughout the day. There'll be tractors there. We'll have refreshments inside cookies inside the post office. We'll have a table display. And I encourage everyone to come out and enjoy Antique Tractor Preservation Day.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, thank you.
Mary, next item.
Item number five, petitions, remonstrances, and oral communications from the audience.
This is the part of the meeting where we hear oral communications from the audience. Please limit your remarks to five minutes to items not on the agenda. Audience members may address items on the agenda when the item is discussed by council. If anybody wants to speak in this part of the meeting, you can come to the podium now.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. Just want to take a couple of minutes with you guys tonight to, excuse me, to bring, give you an update. Basically, about a year and a half ago, I came before you and presented a pilot program that we did for the fire department. And it was with our EMS portion of what we do, our first responder program. Since then, we've had five more individuals on our department complete basically another year of schooling at the college to get their advanced emergency medical technician license under the state of Kansas. When we did our community survey with our citizens, our stakeholders of the community, our, the eight things that the fire department does in Hutchinson, our first responder program, the last two times we did it, was the second most important thing for our citizens. And so what these individuals behind me tonight, I just want to recognize them, they're, we have 10 now on our department that are advanced EMTs. The ultimate goal is to have one on every engine company and truck company in the city of Hutch. What that does allows us to have an advanced life support person on every one of our engine companies. And so what they do day in and day out, the advanced drugs, the advanced skills that they bring to the table is a great asset to us. They did it all on their own. Nobody paid them to do it. They picked up the time and the dedicate, basically, like I said, almost a year of schooling to do it. So tonight I have with me Engineer Richardson, Engineer Garing, and Captain Raya here. They're all three AMTs that went through the program at one time or another. And like I said, we're up to 10, and it's going to be a great benefit to this community. So, and we're well off and running with this program. And they're on the streets day in and day out right now using their skills and abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Come up, podium, state your name and address.
Sure, I'm Tim Miller. I live at 2712 Morris Road. I just wanted to bring something to your attention. I don't really like to complain, don't. I appreciate what you guys do here every day. I know it's a thankless job. Recently, well, June 13th, so it's been a little bit, a while ago, a city employee was mowing the drainage ditch behind our house. Took a swipe and it hit our fence. We have a plastic privacy, privacy fence back there, and it damaged it. And he came to the door. We weren't home. And so I called the city and they said I need to fill out a form, which I did. I got, I got an appraisal for the cost and filled out that form. And, excuse me, the damage is small. It was $380.63. Paul Brown, which I don't, haven't met, but I see he's sitting here. He apparently oversees this process, but he has never contacted me about, about that. It's been 67 days now. And I called Mary, his assistant, several times, at least five, by phone, also by email. And she's always been polite and says she will pass along my concerns to the city attorney. I've also contacted you, Mr. Magers, about this, and you said that you would also be talking to the city attorney, and I appreciate that. And I'm not an expert on taxes. I did pay last year around $7,000 in taxes, $2,000 in specials where I live, and that seems like quite a bit. Feels like, seems like just damage to the property could be addressed in a little more timely manner. I know the law says that you don't have to do things for 120 days. That's the maximum, obviously, that you have to do it within, but it seems like an appropriate response, even acknowledgement or something earlier than that would, would be in order and appreciated. So just like to say, I'm kind of disappointed in that response and appreciate what you guys do. But thinks, I think this could be something maybe that could be addressed at some point in the future.
Tim, just a second. So I have passed this on to Mr. Brown and proper departments. So I think it is still in the process. So sorry, nobody's reached out. I thought they'd reached out by now. But I'll follow up more about it after tonight and just.
Let me just address that now.
You want to address it now? Okay, sure.
Let me tell you what went on with Mr. Miller's claim when we were viewing it. Number one, we don't find a fence permit on record. The other thing is that fence has been built into the city's easement that we need to maintain the ditch because it's our requirement. We are obligated to maintain that. Engineering is currently looking at that to determine how far Mr. Miller will need to move his fence.
I mean, couldn't we call him back and at least say, hey, we're looking into it? That would be, that would be my suggestion.
We're looking into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, Mary, next item.
Number six, Consent Agenda.
Has, well, council had a chance to review the consent agenda. Any questions?
No questions. I would note that the two special events on the consent agenda, the Brewfest event is October 4th, and the Southwest Brooktown Fiesta event is October 18th. More of just information. Other, I'd move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Next item.
Item number seven, ordinances and resolutions. A, consider an ordinance authorizing issuance of GO bonds to pay for Woody C. Avenue C Bridge.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. In July, the council awarded the Avenue C, I'm sorry, the Woody C Avenue C Bridge repair to Wildcat construction for just over 1.4 million. Per IRS regulations, if we do not bond this before we incur expenses, we need to approve the attached ordinance stating that we intend to bond the project and authorizing that so that we can reimburse ourselves with the GO bond proceeds at a later date. We are asking to bond up to 1.75 million for this project to allow $50,000 of design fees and a contingency. Later on, probably later this year, we will bond this with other projects. That is usually our process so that we can reduce bonding costs and fees. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, council?
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing issuance of GO bonds to pay for Woody C. Avenue C Bridge and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Next item.
Item 7B, Consider Resolution Scheduling Public Hearing for Landmark RHID.
Good evening, council. In front of you, you have a resolution scheduling a public hearing for October 7, 2025, to consider the establishment of the landmark reinvestment housing incentive district, or an RHID, and the adoption of the related development plan. So the proposed RHID covers the landmark property in downtown Hutchinson. The development plan includes 36 new apartment units for studio units, 21 bedroom units, and 12 bedroom units located on the second through fifth floors of the existing building. We don't anticipate any public facility improvements as the infrastructure already exists in the area. The only action before the governing body tonight is to set the date for the required public hearing to consider the adoption of development plan and the establishment of the RHID. So really, all you're doing tonight is scheduling that RHID hearing. If there are questions from the public or from yourselves, we can address those during the meeting on October 7.
So we, so we just need to set a date for that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so all you're doing is taking action, a resolution, to set a date for October 7.
Okay, so we just need to make a motion to, okay. So I guess I'm just looking for a motion.
I move to approve a resolution scheduling public hearing landmark RHID and authorize mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Item eight, New Business Boards and Commissions Discussion.
Hello, council. Dave Zatello, Director of Strategic Growth. The mayor had requested that we send all of our ordinances, bylaws, and statutes related to boards and commissions, along with our standard operating procedures. So I won't go through all of those statutes and bylaws and ordinances. It would take quite a bit tonight to go through that. Mostly what I want to do is just explain the appointment process, and then I have a few questions for you to understand some goals for the appointment of the boards and commissions that we have at the city. So just a quick overview. Members are appointed by the mayor. Each board has a staff liaison. Appointments are confirmed by the city council. Once a term is expired by, a term is expired for a commissioner or board member, staff notifies the liaison. So in this case, Mayor Rogers would notify the liaison before members' term ends. And then the liaison has to make a decision to reappoint, is they're eligible for reappointment, or if they're recommending a new person. And that recommendation is sent to the mayor for approval. Once the mayor has approved that, then it's placed on the consent agenda. And then city council votes during the regular meeting for that appointment. Anyone may apply using the city's application process, so that can be found on our website. There's also paper copies available here at City Hall. I have an error here on this slide. The applications are active for one year. We changed that ordinance two years ago. So we keep those applications on deck for one year. If somebody is not appointed but are still interested, they'd have to reappoint again the following year. And those copies are sent to the staff liaison. So generally, I just wanted to go through that quick overview and then talk of some of the challenges that we have identified and we've been working over the past few years. So we've noticed some inconsistencies between the board, amongst the boards. And so we're meeting with staff and connecting with some of those liaisons so that everybody follows a similar process. The most important step here is for us to make a recommendation to the mayor. The mayor approves it, and then it goes to city council. We want to make sure we are all consistent with that. Another challenge that we've noticed is the lack of civic engagement culture. So it's just very hard to get folks to volunteer to be part of our boards and commissions. We do what we, what we can with a campaign three years before, or three months before the term expires. So you'll see us do quite a bit of promotion and connection on boards and commissions around October to try to fill all those seats that will be vacant at the end of the year. And then we also try to promote them throughout the year if there is a vacancy because someone stepped down. Then the, I think what has been the most difficult for our liaisons and for staff, just the transition from new staff members being board liaisons. We've just kind of lost some of that institutional knowledge. And it has created some challenges this past year, but we've worked really hard to try to address that. And mostly what, what I really wanted to kind of gather from you, because this seems to be an issue that keeps coming up for staff, is what are you looking for, for boards and commissions? Is there something specific that you want staff to do? Do you want to change the process? What are your expectations? Because it seems like this is something that keeps coming up, just inquiring about, about boards and commissions, having some questions about the process. And one, we wanted to clarify that process, but also just get a little bit more insight and understanding of what your aspirations are for boards and commissions.
Do we currently have any vacancies on those boards and commissions, or are we pretty, pretty full?
I couldn't tell you on top of my mind if, if we do or not. Generally, we try to point those as soon as we can. I think there's some vacancies in the Human Relations Commission, for sure.
And I don't know if, if the process is being looked at as, are there ways to improve this to get more civic engagement? I think the civic engagement aspect of it is what's a big part of driving. How do we do the process that makes it more, I want to say inviting, but a little bit easier for people to do? But there's a lot of things in this process that, you know, the vetting aspect of it that I don't really know how we would streamline that.
Right. And that's mostly, I think, what has been confusing, that staff does what they can to kind of vet who we are recommending to the mayor. We're trying to get a wider pool of who applies to that. But staff makes a recommendation to the mayor, the mayor approves it, we're supposed to approve it, and then we move forward with that. And if that's a process that you like, we, we like that process. We want to continue that process. But I think some questions come, well, why is staff just recommending this? Do we have a say in this process? And so just clarifying what the expectation is, I think, would be beneficial for us.
I think it would be important. Is, is staff providing all the names that have applied and then making a recommendation on it? So here are the five people that applied. Here are the two we would recommend, and why? That way that the, the mayor is aware of who has applied? Because sometimes you get, you know, you'll be at Dylan's and someone will say, hey, I applied for that. Did you?
Yeah. So again, back to, it is not part of our standard operation procedure. So some staff members will provide the list of all the applicants that apply for that specific board and commission. We can incorporate that as part of the process, but it's not something that all the liaisons do.
The other aspect of that, that gives us data in regards to what groups are actually, people are getting involved with which boards and commissions, and which ones are not being paid any attention to on our end, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think a bigger question for us is, what is your goal? I mean, what are you trying to accomplish when you are looking at this process? And if you have desire to change it, what are you after? What specifically are you looking into for this process?
All the boards advertise on our, on our City of Hutch page. They are, and openings are there showing what.
Yeah, there's an opening on a board and commission. We try to make that known. At the end of the year, around October, we also say, after this year is over, there will be 20 vacancies on our boards and commissions. And so then we try to recruit for those specific boards and commissions. That's a more united effort at the end of the year. If there are vacancies throughout the year because someone stepped down, then we also make those knowns through our city communications.
As we, as we go through different topics and we're, we're putting out material on, let's say, Memorial Hall or something like that, I think it'd be important for us to put out what groups help form the rules that oversee. You know, if we're talking about Memorial Hall, do we need to talk about the Landmarks Commission? And then what does the Landmarks Commission do?
I think that's where, right where I'm at. I feel like, but you've already, I feel like there could be more qualified folks in certain areas. You know, we just appointed somebody to the Airport Advisory Board, and he has all kinds of aviation experience. I know in the past three to six months, there's been some boards that have had people recommended that have no, no experience in that area of expertise, I guess. But you've already addressed that, that there is a lack of civic engagement. So I guess we should appreciate those that want to serve. But, but for me, I'm hopeful that staff is vetting people and putting the most qualified or most available person, you know, the one that makes the most sense. That's, I mean, I, I don't know that our system is broken necessarily or anything like that.
How are we determining their qual, I mean, I don't want to say qualifications or, to be like, hey, you're, we're selecting you for this board? I mean, how, do we have like a guideline we're going through to get to that point?
Yeah, so there are some boards that have specific requirements. So I think about the Trades Board. It has some requirements of certain folks need to be from certain trades to be part of that boarding. Different boards might not have any just general desire to help around housing or, yeah, the different boards. I don't think we try to limit that you have to be a tree expert to be part of the, the tree board. Don't think that's necessarily. Don't think that's necessarily our intention. You don't have to be a housing expert to be part of the housing conversation. The more different voices we can gather, the better. We tend to try to have a realtor, at least in the Housing Commission. But there are not really strict guidelines that say this is what makes somebody a qualified. It's generally having a conversation with them. Some boards will interview, present the candidate, approve it, and then it's sent to the mayor. So some boards will do that, and all of our boards do that. It just depends on their bylaws.
Give you any direction, I guess. I don't, yeah, I don't know that.
Now, and that's been, I think, the issue, that we're not quite sure what success looks like for you.
Well, success would be more involve community members, so I'm not sure how you achieve that.
Get right on.
We'll go change culture, for sure, yeah.
Would you please?
Yeah, come to the podium.
Just simple, is there a minimum age?
You have to come to the podium.
Quick question.
You know I'm going to make you come up here, though.
It's got to be on public record, so you need to.
I just wanted to know if there's a minimum age to be on one of these boards?
That is a quick question. Now, there usually isn't a minimum, I don't think, above looking at our city attorney.
Hopefully, there are those.
I guess I should make sure. There's no other questions from the audience, too, because, you know, we're trying to get you to participate. So if you have any questions, by all means, come up to the podium and ask the question, too, to make it, so we get more participants, so. Yeah.
It's probably a dumb question, but there's no dumb questions.
There's no dumb questions.
I guess, oh god, I had it in my mind.
Can you state your name and?
My name is Christian Coley.
Address?
100 West 11th. My question was more like, if you did sign up for a job and you turned out to be bad for the job, would there, what would it be? I mean, it sounds like it's a volunteer position.
Yeah, it's a volunteer position for a board.
Yeah, so if you were learning, like, looking for experience in something, and you turned out bad, would there be any repercussions?
Probably not.
Probably not.
That's all I have.
Maybe I'll apply.
Thank you.
Do you have more direction for staff?
I think we need to think about it a little bit.
Yeah. Okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you. Very helpful.
Thanks, David.
Mary, next item.
I'd make the update on Woodyseed progress.
You're going to say it's done, right?
I would be nice, yeah. I'd sleep better at night, I think. Evening, council. Justin Carum, Construction Manager, Engineering. So tonight, we just kind of want to go through and kind of just give a quick update on the project, and we'll go ahead and get started. So kind of just a refresher, some key dates. Road closed detour was implemented on February 27th. Construction work began March 3rd. Avenue A Bridge was demoed April 21st. Avenue B Bridge was demoed July 8th. Currently, the contractors' completion date per their schedule is in early December. The contract substantial completion date is January 31st of '26. So, and then on there as well, we have the completion date for the Avenue C Bridge repair with Wildcat, and we will be having that pre-construction meeting next week. So we'll should have a schedule then of kind of what they're anticipating. But last check, they're looking to start in the fall, so.
All right.
So a couple sight photos of Avenue A Bridge demo. These were kind of, we don't do a lot of bridge demos in the city, so these were kind of cool to see go down. And the equipment that was used was pretty interesting, and so kind of like to share some of these interesting photos. So that's part of the debris pile, some of the reinforcement, so quite a bit of mess that was cleaned up. This is the Avenue B, so this is prior to really ripping it apart. You see how they kind of punched through the deck to kind of soften it up and made promise progress from there. Couple more photos of just the demo, kind of just interesting. And this one's basically just showing it completely demolished, and a majority of that has been hauled off. This is some of the water line on Avenue A. This is looking to the north, so this is a six-inch line that we installed. This is partial backfill that line after it's been plumbed in. And they kind of look to see the final grading and kind of the compaction. And this is where, excuse me, where this line ties in at Sherman. So it's kind of interesting, kind of shows some of the extensive, some of the work that's been completed to date. Some photos of the storm water work that's been ongoing. This is over there at the east side of the project on Avenue A. So some of the size of the, it's 36-inch reinforced concrete pipe that's been installed. Quite a bit of stormwater work through this whole project, so. And that shows one of the structures that's installed, about the midpoint of Avenue A. So a lot of work, a lot of effort to get just the underground utilities installed. This is pretty, pretty close to how it looks today. This is kind of very close to final grade, the roundabout itself. So if, as you can kind of see, it's kind of elevated up. So coming from the tie-in points, it does elevate up slightly to the roundabout, and then from there, we will be going towards the Woodyseed Freeway. Kind of look to the west, showing some of the roadway taking shape. And so this is all pretty close to final grade, so the next step would be putting in the base rock, which is six inches thick. And this is looking to the south at, towards Woodyseed. So obviously, there's some dirt work to be done to connect the proposed roundabout to the Avenue C Bridge. And just a reminder that we do have a time lapse of Avenue A available online under Public Works on the city website. And we also have a camera for Avenue B, so if you're interested in seeing that, it is available. So a quick breakdown of the schedule. So with this project, we had 362 calendar days total. Right now, we've used about 192. We have about 170 days remaining per the contract. So that doesn't account for, say, rain, rain delays or other delays that are out of the contractor's control. So that's subject to change if we do start getting close in the project. So currently, the project remains on track to the contractor's estimated completion date. The project has encountered common challenges, including rain and utility conflicts. Completion of the Avenue A corridor from Adams to Madison has been prioritized. And that's due to kind of the phasing of the Avenue C Bridge work. Since it's going to be delayed longer than we would like, if we can get east-west open of Avenue A, that's going to relieve the residents sooner rather than later, so. Budget, so currently, we have an authorized amount just north of 3.6 million. The current, the awarded project amount was just under 3.6 million. So currently, we have about seven change orders that have been approved, totaling positive 46,000 and some change. So there's about 1.2% over budget at this point, which is pretty good for a project this size. And to kind of wrap up, one-month outlook. So currently, we're doing some waterline lowering and repair work on Avenue B. Avenue B storm water pipe installation will follow suit after that. We have entrenched some of these lowerings, are getting some of this existing waterline out of the way for some of the new storm that we're putting in. And so dirt work has continued, is looking to continue in about two to three weeks. So Kansas Concrete will be mobilizing another dirt contractor to complete the remaining grading, backfill, and rock base. And then once again, Avenue A from Adams to Madison will be prioritized moving forward. So I'm sure you guys have quite a few questions, so I'll stand to answer any of those.
Do you know how old the old water lines that were in there that you took out? I'm sure there was old water lines in there.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't recall the ones on Avenue A, excuse me. But one that we're currently lowering on B was installed in '99, so it's not super old. And then I think the other ones that are heading east-west are probably in the 40s or 50s, if I recall right. So there's kind of, that whole area down there is just a mix of a lot of layers of City of Hutchinson history down there. So that's, it's challenging to build down there because, you know, Woodyseed used to be Jefferson Street, and then they built Woodyseed over top of that. Some of the utilities were there, some of them were added later. So it is kind of a, it's kind of, it's kind of a mess down there at times, once you break the surface, so.
What are some, what are some of the authorized change orders? What caused some of those?
Yep, so some of those are, so specifically, this picture is showing a 16-inch water main that needed to be lowered. So that's one of the change orders. So this is, Kansas Concrete has stepped up and agreed, and they're currently working on this. And so basically, getting that out of the way of the, of the new storm is part of that, and that's kind of a large chunk. We've had some additional extensions as far as removing or replace of pavement on Avenue B. We, per the plan, going away from the plan, we had to extend some of those to account for some of the stormwater work that was going to be done. So I would say it's kind of a, kind of a mix of, some of it is to do with misses on the plans, some of it's to do with things that we encountered that were not foreseen. And so it's kind of, kind of the average mix, I would say, so.
Are we going to get the traffic lights at Anne Adams done? Like, when the road is open, we have the new lights installed and ready to go?
Yes, yeah, that would be part of prioritizing.
I'm talking about the East and West Avenue A that we're going to use for relief while we.
Yeah, that'd be part of making, opening that up to the public. We would have to get that done before we could really open it up, so yeah, yeah.
Making sure.
Can you, can you tell us a little bit more about bringing in the other dirt contractor and how that's being vetted, that process?
Okay, yep, so I will start with stating that, so engineering, our contract is directly with the prime contractor. So what the relationship between the prime contractor and subcontractor is solely on the prime. So we do have a part in that process. We do vet the companies that are presented to be subs, but as far as what those contracts look like, how they're implemented, that falls solely on the prime contractor. So in this process, we were notified that Kansas Concrete was looking to make a change. They sent us the, the new subcontract they're looking at. We reviewed it, and we gave them our response, so.
And it all meets the original bid documents for qualifications?
We are vetting that currently, but I don't have any doubt that they'll be met.
How long is it going to take for that process to vet them, the new contractor?
We're pretty close. We're kind of just waiting on the, the final details. When it was brought to us, you know, in this business, nothing's really set in stone until it's inked. So we're kind of waiting for that to fully materialize, so.
So you're 172 days out from the end of the project. I mean, is this going to delay the project at all, affect the budget at all?
So a change of subcontractor normally does not affect the city's budget. This is basically the.
This will be on them?
It'd be, it'd be the prime contractor to the sub. So, but as far as schedule, this would, I think this does delay them slightly from where they hoped to be. But talking with the prime contractor, they had stated that they would dedicate more resources than initially planned to try to make up that difference and stay on track.
What's the definition of slightly?
So right now, I think, per their con, so they are pretty, they left themselves quite a bit of room for the hiccups. And so currently, I think we're probably two, two weeks or so behind where they would like to be. I think their, their current schedule was to begin concrete work in late August, so it's right about there. So I believe with kind of this, this change, they're looking kind of mid-September to really get rolling on that. So not, not a huge impact at this time. But like anything in this industry, it's subject to change, but currently, I'm not seeing any, not foreseeing anything major at this point.
And just to clarify, there is a performance bond where they have to meet certain deadlines, or they're penalized, basically.
Correct.
Discount the job, or?
Yes, so our contracts are kind of unique, and we set them up by calendar day, or not calendar day, excuse me, completion date. So no matter kind of what happens throughout the project, the completion date is the completion date. You can set it up otherwise where it's like by working days or by calendar days that have elapsed, but ours is hard deadline dates. And then once we get close, we negotiate rain delays and things of that nature, to be fair, to what's occurred, so.
And there are liquidated damages on this?
There is liquidated damages, yes.
On the change orders, I saw the dollar amount, were there added days for the completion date based on those change orders?
No, normally, we kind of document those in our, our daily notes, and then we kind of, if needed, we kind of go back and we negotiate those as, as we see fit. At that point, we could, we could go back and look at every weather delay, or we could look at, say, how long it took for a lowering that was unplanned, and we can kind of negotiate that.
Is there going to be any type of release letter to the previous dirt contractor so they're not liable for anything that might happen after the fact? And I'm just looking for, even, even payment to the previous dirt contractor, make sure that it hasn't come back to us.
Right.
The work they've done to this point, I guess.
Right, so that, that would fall on the prime contractor. So our, our contract, if something is not sufficient, we would not call the sub to correct the issue, we call the prime. It's the prime's responsibility. So a change in sub wouldn't necessarily change our process, and as far as.
I was just making sure that didn't affect, I mean, I know that's, you're more concerned with the prime contractor, I just want to make sure that it didn't affect anything on our end with this change, I guess, is what I was.
I don't, I don't foresee it. It's not uncommon for a sub to get changed. Normally, it's, I'd say, maybe like a striping contractor, they got busy, and so they just swap them, and we're familiar with a lot of those. So this is, you know, a little bit larger scale swap at this point of this project. But I don't expect the city to really have any negative impact on this. Obviously, if, say, like, a subcontractor was not getting paid out the work they completed, we would, you know, that'd be something we would kind of involve ourselves in to make sure that got resolved, so.
Any additional questions?
No.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mary, next item.
Item number eight, C, consider.
Hold on. You have a question on the last item, sorry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, I don't know if it's so much of a question, well, question as much as a comment. Jesse Juma. I just wanted to note that I hope that we're staying in communication with, like, Ms. Flores over here, and with the Velasquez family. Those are two of the homes that are very close to the, you know, proximity to what's going on down there. And Marcella has mentioned some, Velasquez has mentioned sometimes that just, if she has any questions or something, how getting ahold of somebody here at the city. I'm not sure if she has a direct contact here yet or not, but I'm hoping that as the construction goes on, that you guys maybe even keep in contact with them to make sure that, you know, nothing's bothering those families that are there.
Jesse, both, both of those folks have my number.
Right, okay, good, good, okay. And then, and then Cindy, you may have some sense, but at one time, the water went out for a little bit, you know, because of the construction. So I think in the area, the neighborhood. And I'd saw something on Facebook that they've mentioned, you know, got out there to try to let the residents know that there was a, that their water line might have stopped for a couple hours or something like that, you know? So, you know, I guess I commend, maybe if that's, you know, what happened, you know, at least you guys are trying to communicate. But, or Dave, I think you were involved in that, too, or something. You know, I saw some chatter online about mentioning about some water lines that were cut off. So just if you continue stuff like that, you know, for the construction, what was going on, just out of respect for the neighborhood and everything like that.
Hello, my name is Cindy Flores. I live at 229 West Avenue B. And coming back to the construction guys with Kansas Concrete, I want to tell you that the community down there, the area is very pleased with them. They're gentlemen that are very polite, very respectful. They're always picking up after themselves, and they have a lot of communication with our area. And that, you know, we know what goes on a daily basis, so we're all there to help one another. So we just want to thank you. They're a great group of people.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Yes, absolutely.
Evan Patterson, City Engineer. I do want to apologize. Marcel has reached out to me. She called while I was out sick, and I just haven't had a chance to catch up with her. So I'll try to get to that tomorrow and return her call, so that's on me, guys, so I apologize. And I will get back to her.
All right. Thank you.
I did also want to note.
This is the biggest CIP project we have right now, and while I won't say.
This is the biggest CIP project we have right now. And while I won't say that I was worried before the project started, it was high visibility and a lot of moving parts. And while it's not done, the team that's been working on it, both on the contractor's side and our team, have really impressed me. So I've been super happy with my group. And the previous dirt work contractor accomplished a lot of great things at the same time. So in working with Kansas Concrete, it's been, been a good experience. So hopefully we finish the project with the same quality that we started it.
Thanks, Evan. Next item?
Item number 8C, consider a zone change from R5 High Density Residential District to C1 Office Commercial District.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Matt Williams, Director of Community Development. The applicant for this case is requesting a zone change from the R5 High Density Residential District to the C1 Office Commercial District to allow for the development of a self-service car wash. The subject site is located at 1330 East 23rd and is just over an acre. The site consists of three parcels and is currently developed with a single-family home. The character of the area is a mix of residential and commercial. Adjacent properties to the north and west are zoned R5 and developed with single-family homes. Properties across 23rd to the south are zoned C4 Special Commercial District and currently developed with restaurants and an entertainment center. Properties across Lorraine Street to the east are zoned C3 Outdoor Commercial District and developed with a realty business. On July 22nd, the Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommended denial 6-0, adopting the recommendations and findings of planning staff. Three members of the public spoke in opposition of the case with concerns of the close proximity to the existing homes, the residential character of the area, their nearby assisted living facility, as well as potential noise, light pollution and added traffic. We did receive five valid protest petitions against the request. All five of the properties were within the protest calculation area. And the calculation is 59.57, which is more than the required state threshold of 20%, which means to approve this case, we would need a super majority of four or five votes. It is recommended that City Council adopt the finding of Planning Commission and deny the requested zone change. Alternatives include overriding the Planning Commission, adopting alternative findings and approving the request. That would require four or five votes. I'll take you through a few additional slides. Here is the zoning map showing that this area is R5 and so is most of the corner, that northwest corner of the intersection. Got commercial to the east and south.
And to clarify, Matt?
Yes.
Go back to the last slide. So we're just asking to be C1, which is the pink down 23rd?
Correct.
Back to the west. How did that get done?
This right here. This happened a few years ago. When I was looking into this, I, I looked into that one too. Apparently it was a, a zone change. I can't remember what it was for, but whoever developed, whoever requested the zone change, it was approved and then they never developed the property.
It was a financial services business, local entrepreneur.
So it is vacant right now, I believe?
It is. Last I saw, it was vacant.
Was it the same result here, the planning and zoning denied that and it was over?
If I remember correctly, planning and zoning approved it because of what was going in there was professional office, a small professional office. And we found that it was kind of like-kind to the neighborhood feel. This is going back a few times. I've slept since then.
Okay. Well, I just, because really, we're just talking about the rezoning. I don't know that we're talking about specific business. I mean, we did it there. I'm just not sure. Anyway, I'm, go ahead, Matt. I'm gonna...
Here's the comprehensive plan's future land use map showing this corner as future high-density residential. The comp plan does consider the C1 Office Commercial District to be a compatible zoning with high-density residential. And here's a few photos. So here's a photo looking northeast of the site. Looking north. Properties across the street. Here's the restaurant to the south. The alley. Here's the realty business to the east. Looking west. And here's the site. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So they're looking to put a car wash on all three lots or just...
They are looking to, my understanding is tear down the single-family house that's on this property. And then, yes, they would put in a, the applicant is here, the Planning Commission, they talked about, I think it was gonna be a two-stall car wash, two-stall self-serve car wash. And then the rest of the site would be parking and pavement, I believe.
Do we actually have a site plan for what they actually, they're proposing with?
We don't require a site plan for rezoning.
You don't require a site plan, yeah, okay.
Because, I mean, theoretically, they could rezone it and the project doesn't happen and the site plan's kind of not dependent on that. So we're really just talking about the zoning. But I believe they do have a site plan that they showed at Planning Commission. I think they had a piece of paper.
I mean, my feeling on this situation is it, it makes sense, for me, this is my opinion, that that whole area will probably be eventually developed into some sort of commercial. We have a bowling alley with a big parking lot right across the street. We have another lot there that will certainly be before us at some point for some kind of commercial building. And then we have, and, and I realize that YMCA is not a commercial building, but it's 100 feet away from apartments. I mean, and it's, it's massive. And so for this to not be approved, it just doesn't, and I know there's tests that we do, eight of them, I believe. But it just seems to me that we probably should move forward with, with what will ultimately happen to that intersection, in my opinion. I mean, I don't, I don't see a high-rise apartment going there, which it could right now, right?
Uh, R5, yeah. I mean, an apartment building could go there, yes.
I don't know. That's just my opinion, guys. I, it...
My only concern is those two residential homes on either side of it. I don't know what that does, you know, property values, and then what you're gonna have light-wise, et cetera, you know? Living beside that, I mean, it's the one thing, the only thing I think of looking at those two. Now you look around and everywhere else, there's not really that issue, except for those two.
Well, and as I look at it, there's a road separating the one house and then, and then the other, there seems to be, and, and I was thinking about that very thing earlier. And it could actually raise the price of that property because somebody may want to rezone the next house and sell out and then, but that's just my opinion. That's how I would be prepared to vote.
The, the other one that we were looking at a minute ago, that's kind of a comparable, when they came in, they had neighbors that were advocating on their behalf of what they were doing. And it was part of the comprehensive plan for that to be commercial, which helped the case to make that commercial at the time, even though nothing ended up happening.
Why would the comprehensive plan want that to be commercial and then that corner?
Probably because there was a house on the corner right there.
Okay.
And that was an empty lot. And I don't know if, I don't know when the church was put across the street on the south side of the road from that commercial property, but that was something that was discussed too.
So let me get this straight. They want us to, the, the board says not to approve it. That's their recommendation?
The, the Planning Commission recommended denial.
And the reason they want the denial, because the votes that you said earlier have to have so many votes to, right?
No, they voted to deny it.
Okay.
And then we had residents surrounding the property, the, the properties here in red and blue. They sent in a protest petition saying that they do not want it approved. And because that, within the green circle here, this calculation area, it's within 200 feet of the property. If more than 20% of that land area protests it, then it requires a super majority by City Council to approve the zone change.
And to clarify, the super majority tonight is all of us or three out of the four?
All four of you will need to vote in favor to overrule the Planning Commission.
And so if the mayor was here, then it would be four of five?
Correct.
Gotcha.
I'd like to hear from the applicant. And the, I guess if there's anybody else here too.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. And I would just clarify, so you could approve it with four or five votes. You could deny it with a simple majority. You could also send it back to Planning Commission is another option.
Hi, Council. Keith Frederick, 606 East 42nd Avenue. I purchased this property about 13, 14 years ago in plans of, at one point, putting my chiropractic office and other retail-like offices. I did visit with the city. I did not go through the process at that time, but always had a plan to turn it commercial. The lot closest on the far left of the screen had a, a house at one point, and I did demolish that house and tear it down. And now just manage and maintain the property the way it is. Since I've purchased it, you know, interesting, KDOT has traffic at Lorraine Street of 10,500 and 23rd at 5,700. I know currently, the YMCA runs 10,000 to 15,000 individuals or cars through there a day. With going down the street, I expect that to go up. And I'm not sure if there's any current traffic counts better than what KDOT has at this point. Lorraine Street is a four-lane with a turning lane, which is fantastic. And I think that's pretty futuristic for the, the city to think, especially since most commercial is probably gonna go up Lorraine Street to 30th Street. And I know there's always setbacks as far as for sound and light pollution that somebody beyond me knows those specific things. Dr. Brun, or doctor, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Brunson, the applicant, co-applicant. Him and I do not have a contract because if we knew that this had to go down the way first, he can't be here today, but his son is here today for any specific questions. And I do think he has the drawing. This is Hunter.
Hello, Hunter Brunson, 5403 North Monroe.
If you want to hand that to Mayor.
That would be kind of what it looks like minus this. It's just to be a two-bay automatic car wash. There's not, I know some light pollution was brought up. It'd be just your normal, uh, streetlights that are pointed in towards the business just to light it up. It would not take the entire lot as of like the building. It was not that big. It's, it's big, but it's not that big. I guess if there's any questions about anything I can help answer, that would be fine.
Where were you thinking of putting it on the property?
Don't know the specifics, but it would be probably more close to the road, this road. It wouldn't be set back up here. It would be closer to the road. It would be, you would pull in, have enough for three or four cars to be in line. And then just enough room to exit out the back and stay as far away as from the back of the property as possible as can be. So it'd be closer to the front.
And your other car wash is on 30th?
Correct.
Next to Subway?
Next to Subway and Sonic, and right in front of Dylan's.
That's where I get my car washed.
That's good.
No, I have no...
Any more questions?
No. Okay. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this item? Okay. Thank you. I guess if you guys have any more discussion you want to do on this or want to move forward with?
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve a zone change from R5 High Density Residential District to C1 Office Commercial District and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
No. We, we didn't even deliberate any of this. I'm, I'm still going through the seven steps here. I mean, there was, there was really, there was no discussion in regards to considering the findings of planning and zoning on the steps that have to be talked about to where we can actually deliberate that.
Okay. Well, I mean, I've read through that.
I know. And I, we can, we can do another motion if we could vote through this, however you want to do it.
Well, yeah, if you, I mean, if you want to have a discussion, I guess we probably should do that and I guess create another motion to discuss it. That's why I threw out the question.
I'll withdraw my motion.
So I want to talk about the, the findings that were deliberated in planning and zoning. And, and I'm not trying to get hot. I just feel like there's been some things at planning and zoning that have, have passed through to us that we end up deliberating here. And, and we have a history of just rubber stamping certain things. I just want to make sure that we're vetting this because there's a lot of people that are concerned that live in the neighborhood one way or the other.
And that's, that's fair.
And that's my, that was my concern too. I, that's why I asked about the two homes. And I thought maybe we might have somebody from that area might come speak tonight as well. So I, that was, again, that was my concern, was the two houses on either side of there. We'll be beside that.
I would just point out that the public hearing for these cases is at Planning Commission. So this public gets notified to go to Planning Commission to have their voices heard there. They don't get noticed to come to City Council.
Okay. I did not know that. And how many people showed up for the public hearing? Or did you have, did you have people show up to the public hearing in planning and zoning?
We did. We definitely had the property owner that lives immediately to the west across Glazier Street. And we had a representative for the assisted living facility.
Okay. And I saw the letter. Is there any of the items, page 130, any of those items that stick out to you that we should discuss? Some of them are opinions rather than, you know, what is detrimental?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair if you want to go through those.
Okay. Well, the zoning uses and character of the neighborhood, the character of the area is mixed with commercial and residential, which we went through that. We went through all the different sites around it. And we have the, basically the closest home is that single-family home just to the west. The property is suitable in R5. The, the, what we have to keep in mind is, we changed the zoning, it may not be a car wash. Could we make a recommendation, planning and zoning? Is there a way that we can limit the use? Like what it can be developed as?
How about we reintroduce, or we introduce the idea of the protective overlay to allow for things like that?
Because I think I'm more concerned with, we have, we're changing the zoning and we're being presented the car wash aspect. And okay, that's what we have in our mind. That's not necessarily what could go there. All of a sudden, it's opened up to any commercial use that falls into that zoning category.
Correct.
And so is this, and I'm asking, is this a situation where the protective overlay is a tool to use?
I could go along with that. But we did the same thing down the street in somebody's backyard. I mean, based on that they were gonna put an office building there and now it's own commercial, they could put whatever, whatever they want in those folks' backyard. I guess my point is we've done it once.
We, we did. And, and they had neighbors that were advocating on behalf of what they were going to do. And it was, it was listed on the future, it was already on the future comprehensive plan as a property to be developed commercial, whether that's right or wrong. It's on the fringe, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to see, I'm, I'm thinking, I'd like to see this go back to planning and zoning and consider a protective overlay.
That limits it to a car wash or an office building or, I mean, what's that look like, Matt? Can you be creative?
I'd be interested in, yeah. I mean, if, if that's the intent, we could discuss that there.
We should let planning and zoning chew over it. That's the role for planning.
And we'd have more time to look at all of the uses that are specifically there and what they would be open to.
You know, I, I certainly would be okay. That is a step forward and not...
I'm not, I don't want to shut the door necessarily. I just want to make sure it's properly vetted. And it's, it's got some, it's got some things in the... And it's, it's got some, it's got some things in the, in the win column and the things in the detriment column, and I want to make sure we give it a fair shake.
And I get, you've been on planning and zoning, and I, I get you're much more knowledgeable about this than I am. But looking at the area, I think that eventually, maybe twenty years from now, that should all be commercial. And we have a lot there, which is one of the things, you know, how, it may not be vacant, but the house, are you renting the house?
I am.
Yeah, so, I mean, he's rented it probably just to pay for the lawn mowing of the other lots or whatever, so.
Is he hiring you to do it?
No.
How much rent does he have to charge?
You know, which that is an issue. Thanks for bringing that up. Maybe we ought to discuss that.
Well, thanks for bringing, I mean, thanks for bringing that, John. I mean, I agree.
Why don't?
Kick it back to.
Yeah, why don't we vote to?
And if they could kick it back to us, say, you jerks, no, we said our piece and we're done.
They probably will.
Then that's fair. That's fair.
If, if you feel comfortable with that, then I'm.
You make that motion and I'll.
Sorry. I move to send it back to planning and zoning to consider a protective overlay for the use of the property to limit the use in commercial, as a commercial zone district.
I'll second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Next item?
Item eight D, Purdue Pharma, Chapter eleven bankruptcy.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. This is another of the opioid settlement type issues. The difference with this one is it is in the context of a bankruptcy proceeding. Purdue Pharma is basically surrendering their company as a part of the bankruptcy, and apparently there's some other contributions from the Sackler family. This is a matter that's already been up to the U.S. Supreme Court once, and it wouldn't be surprising to see it go again. But really, our only, only involvement here is to cast a ballot. It's a Chapter eleven bankruptcy. We're an unsecured creditor. Normally, you don't get anything in a Chapter eleven bankruptcy. It's just in this case, there are assets beyond the secured creditors. And what asking for at this point is just for the authority of the city manager to sign the ballot, accepting the plan. It has the net effect of putting the city's hat in the ring to receive something. And because of the legislation from the state on the Kansas fights addiction, it will likely be administered by the Kansas Attorney General's Office and paid out on a pro rata basis. Not likely we would receive it directly. So this is just to give us authority to get in there, cast the ballot, sign the documents, and move on.
Any questions from counsel?
No.
I'm not going to look for a motion.
I move to approve a ballot accepting Purdue Pharma Chapter eleven bankruptcy plan and authorize the city manager to sign the ballot and all related documents.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Next item?
Item eight E, Memorial Hall, RFP management agreement.
Good evening. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. At our last meeting, we were asked to put together an RFP for management services for Memorial Hall. So that is at the very end of the packet. I do just want to kind of hit the highlights, and then we'll open it up for questions or comments. So first, I just want to be clear that this is a true management agreement we're seeking out, not just a promoter. So the RFP reads, the services shall include, but not limited, to general management, scheduling, promotion of events, marketing of the venue, ticketing services, food service, and building and equipment maintenance. So really, it's not, it's not just somebody to promote a concert here and there. It's really full, full management of the entire facility. Also in the RFP, I go on to kind of explain that we are in the process of renovating the building. The intent is to renovate in early twenty twenty-seven. And so we would actually are seeking to have a facility manager onboard through the design process. I think that'd be really beneficial, since we're not experts in, in these types of venues, to have somebody who's been there and done that to kind of help guide us to make some of the decisions as far as, you know, ticketing and office space, you know, AV and sound, that kind of stuff to help guide us on that. So, so that is in, in the agreement that we would like to have them onboard during the design process, and then we're seeking a ten-year management agreement after the fact. In the research I found, I saw a lot that were five years, and then there was an addendum that came out and made them ten years. I saw that multiple times. So it seemed like ten years was kind of the, the industry standard. We'll also include the downtown master plan as well as the Memorial Hall reuse plan. We talk a lot about the reuse plan in, in the RFP that, that's going to kind of guide the, the renovations to the building. As far as some of the exact requirements of the, of the proposals, we're asking for an executive summary, a company profile. We're asking them to do a market assessment of Hutchinson as well as the arena itself, or the Memorial Hall itself. We're asking for them to give us some information about their financial capacity and also their business plan. There's lots of things here on their business plan. How many, how many bookings are they anticipating? What types? What is their marketing strategy, promotion strategy, facility maintenance plan, security plan? And then if they have, if, if they're going to add any naming rights or commercial rights or anything as well, so. Then we ask them about comparable venues. I don't know, we want somebody who's never done this work before, who's brand new to the game. So we want to ask, want to hopefully have some examples of similar venues that they've been successful at. Then we ask them if they've ever had a contract canceled, so we make sure that there's somebody that doesn't have kind of a checkered history. The next piece is about compensation and a subsidy. So we're going to ask them flat out, like, what do, what do you see? Is it, is this going to operate in, at a profit? And then, and there'll be, you know, compensation to the city, or are they asking for a subsidy? And then lastly, we're going to ask them to make sure their plan is consistent with our adopted plans downtown and the reuse plan. This terms is how we will evaluate them, very similar to the, to what I just read, but qualifications of the management team, the financial capacity, the business plan, comparable venues, the level of benefit slash cost to the city, and the consistency with adopted plans. So very high level. I mean, I, I kind of hit the highlights there. I do not have dates on this, as you probably noticed. I think that's going to kind of resolve, revolve around when we do our RFQ for design services for the, for the upgrades to the building. So with that, I will stand for questions or comments.
Well, I've read this through, and it seems like you've left no stone unturned.
Any questions from counsel?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
Jesse Juma, again.
It's the third time, isn't it?
Third time's a charm. No, I just wanted to make a comment about, everything's fine so far. Justin, good job. The, I just want, I, I, this language that we use with the hall, there's a, on the third paragraph, it says, the last line, "The current operation of the facility incurs an approximate annual loss of one hundred thousand dollars." I wish we could get off the language of using loss when we refer to the hall and that hundred thousand dollars. There are other facilities, municipal facilities, that we operate and fund, and we don't call them a loss. You know, this is just an expense that we have at the city. And, and, and the hall should be looked at, I think, at, at that way. And that, you know, something, an approximate annual expense of a hundred thousand dollars. But I kind of want to think in a positive mind moving forward with the hall. And, and when we put it out there that we're losing money on the hall, I just think that kind of detracts from moving forward. So I'm wondering if we could change that language. Justin?
No, I think that's a, I think that's a good thought, because you don't want to create a negative going into it.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a great point.
The proposal that they, they know that going into it, so it's going to cost us more money.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think that's, that's a great point. I think we can look at either using the word subsidy, or maybe we just eliminate that altogether. I mean, we don't, so, so, yeah, great, great point to, to not have the, the negative language in there. So I'll, I'll take a look at that.
I would, I would move to proceed with the RFP for management services for Memorial Hall after eliminating the, the talk of subsidies and, and that.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Next item?
Item number ten, report of city officials.
Can you start with you, Garza?
I can start with Fast.
There you go. Let's do Fast.
Let's start with Fast instead.
I've been contacted weekly at least by folks, community members, and I want to get this on the record about Memorial, about Avenue A Park and the, the loitering problem, for lack of a better word, loitering homelessness problem down there. I do want to review and put on record all the things that we have done so far, and then possibly talk about what we could do in the future. So we've had cameras installed in Avenue A Park. We daily have trash pickup so that it doesn't accumulate. We daily check for graffiti, because more trash creates more trash and more of a problem. We have reduced the hours of the park by an hour in the morning and an hour in the evening. HPD is patrolling that every night, at least once a night in the evening hours. We, we just met down there last week, talked through a few things, but, and, and prior to that, we've, we've talked about several things, and we've, we've trimmed the trees up, we've made it more visible driving by. Just, just cleaned the park up. And currently, I believe we have, we have shut the electricity off there unless you want to rent the park officially or, or schedule an event there, and then we can turn the power on. What's happening is people are using, they're, they're coming there because there's electricity there, and they are using it for coffee makers and phone chargers and all the things. Again, officers are there daily. I think that, I think that that's about all I wanted to put on record. They, they, Parks Department is locking the restrooms every single night to, to keep the vandalism down. There's been some vandalism there in the past. That seems to be helping. And then the personal property disposal regulation that we implemented on May first. There are some more things that we can do, possibly attacking it from a safety issue. Clothing on handrails is not safe, impeding a sidewalk could be a trip hazard. I think there's, there's more we can do, and we're, we're discussing those things. Certainly, I don't want to criminalize, and I can't criminalize homelessness. I mean, that, that is not what we should be doing. But it is a problem that keeps coming up over and over, and I thought it would be good to get on record what we are doing. Our Parks Department is working hard, HPD, I, I see them there daily. And, and we know there are some issues. We will continue to try to address those in a constitutional way and moving forward with that. And just wanted to put that on the record. And if, Justin, if you have anything to add, chief, if you have anything to add, be happy to have you guys put on the record. If you don't, that's fine. Hopefully, I covered it, covered it pretty well. So just know that government moves very, very slow, but we do want to be careful that we're not violating anybody's constitutional rights. And I think that is all I have this evening.
All right, I'm only going to leave last, Garza. Richard Sneego.
There's some racing going on this weekend at Salt City, Salt City, is it Raceway or Salt City Racing?
Salt City Racing.
That's what I thought, at the fairgrounds. The only other I had mentioned, obviously, there are some new drivers on the road this last week with school starting. Some of them are probably their parents, because people drive horribly in town sometimes. But yeah, I would keep in mind, school's starting, a lot of kids walking, a lot of kids that are new at driving. Eleventh can be a little tricky in the morning, but that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Garza, your time.
What I got to say, I would like to see, chief, you want to come up here just directly for you, about you, not about you, but yeah. I'd like to see that Office Avenue A have a substation, a police car sitting there.
I didn't mention that, but that's.
And where the police officer will get out and just patrol that park once in a while. I'm close, we have an officer this close on the south end of town. I would think that, I would like to see that myself. I don't know the problems with that. You can say that would be a problem or what?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say it's a problem. It, it has presented problems in the past. The city has done that. I mean, I've been around a long time. We did it probably about twenty-five years ago, and it was unsuccessful. There was a number of reasons for that. I won't get into it on public record of why, but it could, it could work, but it didn't work in the past. Currently, we still have about fourteen officers in training, so we don't have that opportunity to do it right now. I have said before in the past, so I would consider that idea. But I think, as Councilman Fast stated a second ago, homelessness isn't a crime, and having law enforcement trying to address homelessness, is that the right avenue? Is that the avenue that we want to go down? Or is there other entities here in Hutchinson that are designed to deal with homelessness? Is that building better suited for an organization like that? I think that's a question that we need to ask and answer to decide that.
Well, I like that idea too. We can, we have a building there that can be used for an organization like that, or a building we can use a substation. So I don't think we need to use that building towards that way of homelessness. That's what I like to see us look at, you know? Okay, well, thank you.
Don't go too far. I have a question for you as well.
My last thing is, is kind of about me. You guys ever looked on the, on the TV there where it shows everybody on there? I don't know if he can put that on there. Can't you hear me in there? Keep asking, he can put that on. That guy's old. We've got to do something about that. He's like, I gotta, I never, I seen that today when I came in. Look at that, yeah. Man, I got no, that's all I want to know. You know, I looked that way.
You want him to get a filter on that?
I seen that today. That's ridiculous. But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, I got, I got a few things. I, I just need to congratulate Mr. Enrico for being nominated top ten, ten city managers for twenty twenty-five. I think that's pretty, pretty cool.
And then secondary, that was it eighteen seventeen West Nineteenth, the gal came with the, last week, or two weeks ago, with all of the debris in the backyard from the neighbor?
I believe it was.
I was just following up to see if, you know, anything had been, you know, it kind of, it was very concerning to me. So it's one of the things I just kind of bring up to, just kind of throw it out there, just make sure we're doing something about that, so.
I'll, I'll get with Jason, because I know I had talked to him afterwards.
And then the beautiful strip of grass at Thirtieth and Main Street to the west on our new sidewalk project. I'm just curious if we can do, if there's anything that can be done with that. I know we talked about it, and I was just throwing it out there just to make it public. We are looking at it. Sorry, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus.
No, it, it's fine. I've had a few conversations with, with staff about this. So when the sidewalk was put in, was put in extra wide, but it was always intended to be the sidewalk and not a trail. I believe that internally it may have been called a trail, perhaps just misspoken. But the, the property owner has always abated that themselves just by mowing it. And so it, when this came up, it was like, why is this now an issue if the property owner has always fixed? has always fixed the problem themselves? Why is it now all of a sudden the city's responsibility to do that? So, I don't know the answer, other than it should always fall in the hands of the property owner to just mow that little strip of grass. I do know that we have, as staff, have sent letters to them just saying, hey, the project's completed, it's yours to maintain now. You know, it's worded very friendly. So hopefully, the problem gets abated soon, so we don't have to see it or hear about it again.
Well, I just know there's been a lot of talk about it, so that's why, just brought it up to see where we're at.
And some are doing it, and some aren't.
I know. Do you recall, we met at the library four years ago to talk about this? And a lot of discussion on why is it an extra wide, so people can ride bikes on it? Well, if it's a city sidewalk, you can't ride bikes on it. And so, I think there's been a lot of mixed messaging on this project for the last four years. And not, it's on all of us, in a lot of ways.
And I was trying to dig into, like, do we have precedence around town of extra wide sidewalks that aren't trails or anything like that? I mean, you're a Graber, there's extra wide sidewalks, we don't maintain them or mow around there.
So then, what was the purpose of doing an extra wide sidewalk there?
It was before me, I'm not sure.
I know that, but that's what I'm asking, because it seems to me, like, the whole idea was, we are creating something that, to help with mobility, not just walking, but it was also, I thought we were presenting something like this was a bike situation.
This was a connection.
Yeah.
I mean, I still feel like it's word semantics, though. I mean, nothing's changed.
I get it. And a lot of the, a lot of the discussion when we had that library meeting was more around the traffic at Main and 30th, and what we're going to do with that during, well, during construction.
Right, not create more traffic for Carlton Street. I mean, this is.
More digging into it.
More, more growing pains. I mean, this is a good thing, but have we created a budget increase because now we're mowing grass along, an extra side, an extra wide sidewalk?
I'm certainly not proposing that the city mow it, but if we were, I'd rather just dig it out and put concrete tied into the curb or something like that, so we don't have to talk about it again. I'm just saying, like, if it's a little skinny strip, we have more pressing things to be worrying about.
Well, it's just been a talk of the town, so I thought, well, I'm just going to toss it out there, so I'll move on from that and get off that sore subject, so.
No, that's okay.
Chief, my question is, on e-scooters, what is city's code on that?
Yeah, I think we talked about that two council meetings ago.
I couldn't remember what you said.
Yeah, I think Mayor Goss brought that up, and basically, I thought the simplest way to put it is, it's just like bicycles, they follow the same rules of the road as bicycles. So don't have to wear helmets, have to have headlights, I mean, lights on the bicycles at night, use it on the roadway, right side of the road, those type of rules.
How do you, so how do you enforce? I've seen them riding around town. The reason I brought up, I sent a news article to Enrico about a 12-year-old girl that was killed on one, fell and got hit by a car. And so, I don't know, you see them run around town more and more, and you see them darting everywhere. And so, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what enforcement-wise we do with that.
It's probably just.
Do they still obey the same traffic laws then as well?
Yes, correct. Just like a bicycle, if you come up to a red light, you still have to stop. Some people don't think they have to when they're riding bicycles or those e-scooters, but yes, you do. So, it's really the same rules and regulations as the bicycles that we've had in the town forever, that they also dart in front of traffic. They are more common, we're seeing a lot more. If we see those violations, then hopefully the officers enforce the infractions, which I do see that they do from time to time. But it's, it is a risk when you're riding those e-scooters and bicycles on the roadway, and that's why the, you have to follow the rules of the roadway, just like a bicyclist would.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Villegas?
Real quick, oh, can I say one more thing?
One more.
I got a call about, as a person, is worried about the fair coming. On 17th and K-61, they said the weeds are too high, and that we should make sure on 61 that our weeds are cut down, because we have a lot of people coming into town. I thought I'd pass that on to you.
17th and 61?
Yeah.
Is that drainage area, there's low-lying area where we retain water there at 17th and 61?
I've been seeing work out there, even today.
Okay.
Between 17th and 30th.
So, is it our Park Department, or is it Park Department, you do the mowing? Okay.
Didn't that get touched in, or wasn't that mowed already, or no? It's being mowed right now.
Good.
I knew it was coming up.
It's Dodge Prairie Dogs. Okay. You're done? Okay.
Yes, I'm done.
Mr. Villegas?
Well, I'm going to turn it over to our city engineer to give an update on the floodplain mapping, and then I'll wrap it up with a few statements.
Okay.
Good evening, Council. Evan Patterson, city engineer. I don't have a terribly long presentation tonight, but we did get the draft floodplain maps from the state mapping team yesterday, and so I at least wanted to update you on that. And the state, the state has said these maps are now public, so we can provide that information to everyone else as well. So, I'm going to cover the floodplain map, I'm going to talk about the schedule of activities in the next month or so related to the map, and some of those processes, and I'm going to provide some small updates on actions. It hasn't been that long since I was here last time, so we don't have a ton, but I'll update what I can. If it'll, go to the next slide. Ah, there we go. Okay. So I'm going to present, actually, four different images. I forgot to add one here, so I'll show the current floodplain map, I'll show the draft floodplain map, and then I have a third one that identifies the differences between them, so you can compare them all. So this, right here, is what the current floodplain map for Hutchinson looks like. Anything colored bluish is in the floodplain or the floodway, which is the hatched blue sections. So as you can see, there are areas of town that have quite a bit in the floodplain, but this is the draft floodplain map. And in this case, they've changed some of the color coding, but it all still means essentially the same thing, that all of the colored patches are proposed to be added to the floodplain. And then, this slide here gives a comparison. So anything colored yellow was in the floodplain before, and is proposed to stay in the floodplain. Anything in green is actually being proposed to be removed. And then the red color is unfortunately proposed to be added to the floodplain. And I'm happy to go back and forth between these couple of slides, if you guys have questions about them specifically. I also chose one representative neighborhood, there are lots of neighborhoods with the proposed map that are hit hard, but I wanted to show an example of one, just so people had an idea of how bad the impact is. And I thought that, unfortunately, with all the resources that we've been devoting to the Southwest Brick Town neighborhood and the Woody Seed Project, this neighborhood has significant impact from the proposed floodplain maps. You can see, as of right now, none of the neighborhood is in the floodplain, but now what looks like to be over half of it will be in the floodplain once that's finalized.
Evan, and if I could interject, that the city has no control over the floodplain mapping, the changing, anything. So this is being thrust upon all of us, we have nothing to do with this, other than, down the line, there are enforcement things that we would be required to do, but we don't control where it goes, how it looks, anything like that, so.
Hopefully, we can do some things to fix it, but it's a big lift, so I wish I had a solution laid out for you, and I don't. We have lots of things that we can try to do, but this is, this is a pretty big impact. I was trying to have some information to quantify exactly what the impact was, ideas of parcels affected and property values. But the map files are so large, because the map impact is so great, I have to break this up into little small chunks. So it's larger than the mapping team has ever produced before. So they're trying to get us the model files for this, so we can start analyzing that and determining if we think that there are areas where the model should be tweaked or improved, but we still didn't even have that yet, because all the files are just, file sizes are so large.
And are they redoing the entire state?
No, this is only Reno County. So they have a rotation for all of the counties in Kansas, and ours started in, I think it kicked off in 2021. And they met with all of the local government agencies and talked to them about the start of the project. They did some high-level engineering to identify areas of interest, one of which was these drainages in Hutchinson, and then they got a consulting team from WSP to focus on modeling the drainages in town. And they actually had the maps from WSP last year, but they were such a big change, the state mapping team realized that they needed to make sure that those maps were verified before they published them, because I suspect it will cause a lot of people to ask questions about, are these valid maps? So that's our plan as well, is once we get the models, to engage with our consultants to go through the same process of evaluating all their inputs, how they've broken the model up to evaluate whether or not we think it's an accurate map as well. And that is part of the schedule here. So, next Tuesday, we have the flood risk review meeting, which the mapping, the state mapping team comes down here, they're going to meet at our fire training center with all the Reno County government officials. And we'll go over the maps in that meeting, and we'll provide them with whatever comments or feedback we might have. And then they'll publish the maps on a webpage sometime in September, October. Right now, all we have are the hard copies to share with people, because the digital one isn't quite ready yet. And then they'll tentatively finalize the map no earlier than 2027, hopefully later if possible. It's to our advantage if we can ask them to delay, because that lets us accomplish more before the maps get finalized. So again, we're going to be working to validate the models, to make sure that we're not including areas in the floodplain that shouldn't be. We have a list of self-performed projects, and we're staking one of those projects right now, and we're going to try to break ground on it next week. We're going to start over by the Boys and Girls Club in that area right adjacent to Cow Creek. We figured that was a good target, it was once a pond, it's probably a pond for a reason. Eventually, once we get the models, we'll be able to determine which of these projects has the most impact, but we need to get boots on the ground, moving dirt as soon as we can, so we figured that was a good target for that. We'll also continue to work on the list of those big projects that were outlined in the Stormwater Master Plan, we're continuing to seek funding for those. We'll reengage with the state mapping team for the technical assistance grant and pick a good target for that, whether it's an actual project or study. And then we're working, I think next week, Matt, is that the meeting for the start to get certified floodplain managers on staff, which will help us participate in some of the programs out there. Again, we've got a window, at least a year, I'm not sure how much more, to accomplish these projects. So we're working to tackle all those small projects, and we're going to have JEO evaluate those with the model when it's available. Still looking at the same list right now, and I think realistically, tackling, tackling of the, all these may be beyond our capacity in a single year, but we're going to try to get as many of them as we can. We've internally evaluated how much dirt we think we can move in a year, and it's probably beyond all these, but here in a couple of weeks, I hope to have a priority list. And that's it. Got questions?
And I would add that I'll be on a call tomorrow with a representative from Senator Moran's office, just to see if there could be any federal funding to help us with this. So I'll keep you all apprised of that conversation.
Can we have a quick rundown of what this impacts this, our normal, everyday citizen as far as a homeowner, a business owner, or someone that wants to develop in town?
Sure. Matt, could you address that? So for existing property owners and owners of buildings that are now in the floodplain, if they have a mortgage, my understanding is that their lender would require them to have flood insurance. Besides that, any new development that happens within a floodplain, that includes fences, backyard sheds, new commercial, new residential structures, anything like that, they would be required to get a floodplain development permit from the city before they construct in the floodplain, to make sure that they're building it in a way that will not be impacted by floods. And usually, that means they need to build up their project at least a foot above the base flood elevation. So a lot of times, that adds cost to a project if they're having to bring dirt to, you know, lift a project up out of the floodplain.
And I'm just thinking about some of our infill housing initiatives and whatnot, and seeing houses, and all of a sudden, one's sitting three feet higher than everyone else's. I mean, is that something that could be reality with this situation?
I wouldn't expect that. It would depend on what they calculate the base flood elevation to be.
But there could be a lot of fill brought in to.
It'd be fill brought in, and it would, you know, slope up, a house would be higher than other houses, yes. It wouldn't be on stilts necessarily.
Right.
Definitely a danger we perceive is that it could be cost prohibitive, especially for larger projects, you know, if there's additional engineering that they need to do. And that's really a cause for concern that we have, is what this will, the ramifications of this. Typically, most projects look to not be on a floodplain.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Enrico, you still have more?
Yes. So, two items. One, I'm happy to say that we've wrapped up the contract negotiations with SEIU. Those conversations have been very, very good. So, in a future council meeting, we'll have that on the consent agenda for your approval. And that would also include wrapping up the SEIU dispatch as well. So, glad that those are finalized. So, the other one, this one is about the Grace Harbor Park. Councilmember Fast and I, on Tuesday evening of last week, we met with the residents, and they had expressed their feelings about the park, and why was it removed from the CIP. And I want to try my best to capture the spirit and representation of their comments. And they said that, you know, we've worked for years and years to get this project through to the finish line, and there was ups and downs in the city manager's position, and it's, the goalpost moved a little bit. There was comments made that what we wanted in the beginning was a couple swings, a slide in a sidewalk, and then it turned into more than that, and then they got excited about the more than that part, and so they understood taking that out. And I had expressed to them that, like, how we got here. I talked about the budget extensively, and kind of walked them through everything that was cut. I did relay to, it was a group of about 15 people, I, just off the top of my head, close to that, and there was representatives from the Hutrec Commission there as well, that facilitated the meeting. I had expressed to them that during the initial rounds of budget cuts, originally, the Grace Harbor Park was proposed to have 750,000 budgeted, that was cut then to 500,000. I let them know that they survived the first round, and that there is still the spirit and intent of keeping the park as part of the CIP process. But ultimately, in order to make weight, and to at least prioritize the infrastructure that we do have that's failing, that we prioritize that, instead of building something new that at this point in time we couldn't afford. And there was a lot of head bobbing and general appreciation for that, everyone appreciated the additional context. Afterwards, there were feelings and sentiments that, is there any way, and truthfully, kind of the city, there was a lot of pressure in the room, just based on the feelings, if the city could do something. And generally, it always revolved around the youth. So, it was mentioned, well, isn't there a school nearby? And then the statement was made that the school locks the playground. And then the statement was made that the school locks the playground so people can't access it. Turns out that that was not a true statement, but that was at least something said at the time of the meeting. In that a playground park doesn't count as like a park. So there was a couple of feelings that way. And I did express to the group that I would at least talk to you all about the Grace Harbor Park, share the discussion with you all. And then I also committed to at least looking at the budget to see what could be done. The members of Hutch wreck did give us a rough cost estimate that for a sprinkler system and a couple of the other amenities that I just listed, they think it could be around 100 to 150,000. So anyway, Councilmember Fass, if there's anything that I had left off from that discussion, please let me know. But that's kind of the general highlights, so.
I think that's all of it. And there's a little bit of an optics problem with wanting to do additional improvements to parks more so than what was already planned and not doing this after seven years or at least starting on it, you know?
That's actually a really good point, if I may.
Yes.
Another comment that was made, so we did share that, you know, why would the city make a substantial investment on a piece of land that we don't own? So you kind of run the risk of down the line, we have to remove it or something like that. And then the Salvation Army, who was also present at the meeting, stated that, well, you guys don't own the land at the state fairgrounds and you guys put a park there. So I didn't know whether that was true or not. But in talking with our city attorney, we have a long-term lease. So the point made at the meeting, I guess, stands that that is true, that we've done this elsewhere. So, but I just said I wasn't aware of that. I can look into it.
I think one other valid point that was made is, we want to partner. We want to get out our pocketbooks. We want to try to partner with other entities that would donate or would help fund this park. And I think the ask was, can you do anything? What is that bottom number, you know, that we could start? We've been working on this for seven years and, you know, what can we do, super small scale? So, I mean, they have, I don't think they have, they had high expectations of the city just giving them a, you know, a brand-new grandiose park at all. It's just more of a conversation of, you know, a place for kids to come and swing. So anyway, the task at hand for Enrico and I was to try to find something in the budget that we could start and give them.
And August 26th, I think 7:00 PM was the next time we were going to get together with the Grace Harbor Park residents to kind of let them know where we're at. I don't need an answer tonight by any stretch. I certainly don't want to put that on you now. At least think about it and then we can certainly circle back, so. That's all I have for my comments here. But again, I'll stand for questions if you have any.
So when's the budget? We have to finalize it, don't we? The budget, is it in August, right?
Uh, September.
September.
So we're still kind of in the thick of budget season if things still want to get tweaked here and there to make things work.
Well, from my standpoint, I'd like to see us do something. I mean, we cut them from 750 to 500. I guess just sit down and see what we can do, a swing or something.
Yeah. Admittedly, personally, like I felt bad, so I'll certainly eat. I'll eat this one. I, you know, I made the recommendation to cut it. So I, and I told them that I do not regret the recommendation. I do not regret any of my decision. I can still sleep well at night, but I, doesn't mean I don't feel bad, so.
And I will say that Salvation Army took some responsibility. We as a city took responsibility. And Hutch wreck certainly accepted some blame for how we got here and where we're at and how it kind of got out of hand with, you know, three-quarters of a million-dollar park.
Well, I do see that we go back to the table sometime, I don't know, and take a look at this before we finalize the budget. My point of view.
All right. Well, I definitely appreciate the conversation here, so.
Thank you. You guys have any other questions? Okay. Mary, next item?
Executive session.
I think we have a couple of them. I just need to make a motion, move the city council to recess in the executive session pursuant to the preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property, exception KSA 75-4319, in order to discuss the possible acquisition of real property for the Steve Hutchinson. The open meeting to resume in the city council chambers at?
Say 15 minutes.
So 7:40?
Sure.
Do that.
Yep.
Make it easy. Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fass.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
I can't wait to stand there. If you stand, you'll go forty-five minutes.
How about we do thirty? What do you think?
We can try.
Let's try. I think we have two. We got it.
What's that, eight-ten?
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one in order to discuss city manager matters. The open meeting to resume in the city council chamber is at eight-ten P M. Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Eggers?
Yes.
We are reconvened. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I would move to adjourn.
Okay. Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Meggers.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.